All right, 7 o'clock. We'll get this thing started. Roll call, declaration of form. Call to order.
Mr. Lau.
Present.
Mr. Chou.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Here.
I'd like to welcome all the many visitors that we have this evening. Thank you for coming.
Barb, thank you. Jack. Glad you're here today.
I didn't see anyone sign up on the sheet unless, Barb. Do you have something to say? Jack, do you have something to say? I did not receive any kind of notice from anybody, any request. Neither did Mr. Turnberger. Consent agenda. Do we have any items that would need to be pulled out of the consent agenda for further discussion?
It's open.
None? I'll make a motion if we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Chou.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes, but I will abstain on P.O. number 68 from 3.7, agenda item.
What was the P.O. number?
68.
On which one?
3.7.
Mr. Tillman.
No.
You saying none? Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
Okay, item number four, regular business. 4.1, discussion of possible board action regarding changes to the middle school handbook. We have our middle school administrator here.
That is great. Mr. Faulkner couldn't be here tonight, so the high school presented their proposed changes at the July board meeting, but Mr. Torango is here to visit with you and answer any questions you guys may have over his proposed changes.
I looked through this the other day, and I couldn't tell on the electronic version what was new and replaced, so I just wanted to give you some quick.
Yeah, there's so much I had to take off from the high school, so there was a lot of cross-outs, because a lot of it had to retain academic information and things like that. But mainly, what I'm adding or would like to add to middle school is a cellphone policy, so not allow any mobile device usage, and that's on page 22.
If I can, one thing, as you guys look at that, and I told him to present it as like when I do you on a policy, what is currently in the handbook been approved has a strike through in it if he's wanting to delete that. Any new additional information will be italicized and, what else? Is that just italicized?
Yes.
Yeah, so I meant to clarify that.
So, yeah, on page 22, the electronic device policy, and then also on page 22, grooming guidelines, so just consequences for violating the dress code. Those are the two that I would like to add to the middle school handbook and separate middle school from high school.
And what, this is not responding very quickly. Could you explain the cellphone, what we're doing on the cellphone?
Yes, it's not on page 22. That's, that's bus rider rules is page 22.
Do they have access to this one that says original with proposed changes?
Yes, and if it's loaded. We're having trouble loading, so some of them may not be loaded and received or authenticated.
Okay, so on the electronic device, I'll go ahead and read off all the bullet points and everything. It says, "HMS recognizes the importance of communication and collaboration and provides devices for students to be productive in the classroom. To keep the focus on academics and to reduce unnecessary distractions, the school enforces the following: Cell phones, smartwatches, and all mobile devices shall be turned off when entering school campus. Cell phones and all mobile devices should be out of sight at all times. Students may drop off their mobile device in the main office before school begins."
Which one page is yours?
It says, what's his, starts on 22, and then goes on to 23?
Mine shows page 20, so I don't know.
Okay. He lines it on 17.
Well, there's two.
Does it under the letter N?
17 is electronic device.
Page 17. Yep. So we're just doing what we should do, have them keep it off, keep it in their pocket.
Yes, and Lindsay, we cleaned out this summer, these last few weeks, the vault to where students have the option to check in the office in the beginning of the day, and we have it locked up. We have it locked, or it just needs to be out of sight. Just giving transition time, which that was, we already had that rule, it just wasn't in the handbook, and requests use a phone or cellphone will be screened in the conversation monitor. I think just, a failure to follow these guidelines will result in a behavior detention and confiscation of the phone. So if I confiscate the phone, I keep it locked in the vault, and then they're assigned a detention, and then the parent has to pick it up at the end of the day. And I already had that rule, and it worked pretty well this past year, it just wasn't in the handbook.
She's getting ready to give you ones to qualify. So I have a one that would be finalized if approved, to kind of think some of you may have that one, so she's getting ready to give that, that other one to you.
That's fine. Any other major things?
Well, on the grooming guidelines, which is also, should be on page 22, just changing the consequences for it, so first violation, students will be provided an alternative option for their clothing that complies with the dress code. Students will not be allowed to contact anyone for another article of clothing. So that wasn't in the handbook to where they weren't allowed to contact. We were allowing them to contact parents, but the two issues that I saw the most, let's say the most, students either already had something ready in their backpack to change into because they knew they were violating the dress code, or they would call their parent, and their parent, or I would call their parent, and their parent would say, "Oh, yeah, I figured that was going to happen. I have something ready, and I'm going to come get it." And then, so we have stuff in the closet that's new, that, some of the students are not, they're not fans of some of the sweatpants we have in there, but some are, you know, it was in stuff for some students, so, yeah, that's really the change on that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Torango? Any further comments from you?
Well, I mean, just without having enough to do.
You might check your email if you can log into your email. She would, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, for those that didn't have the amended copy, it is in your email. It's not, she wasn't able to do it onto the assembly.
Hey, yeah, yeah.
Make sure to take time to look at that.
I think one of the issues is, I've been on this board since it really, well, since you were in school, and cell phones started coming to school, you know, for the first time. And one of the biggest issues is, this teacher does not apply the same rule that this teacher does, even if the handbook is written this way. I mean, when I ask my children, it's, "Oh, we can have them in this class as long as we're done with our, with our work." Oh, no, we can't have them in this class, when there's always been a policy against it. I just, we need uniform, you know, obviously, you need a policy, but we also need the teachers and staff to administer policy.
I agree, and my middle school staff, they did great. I mean, if you ever visited a classroom, students were not on cellphone, unless there was a sub. Our students did a good job of tricking subs into letting them get on cellphones, but I'd have to monitor that, but for the most part, there were a couple reminders for the staff, but they did a really good job.
And your sentiments were echoed in our principal's meeting with Mr. Faulkner, all of us, of saying, no sense in adopting anything if you and your teachers aren't going for it, so.
Right. Why not just have them leave them in their lockers, not have one of them at all unless they have a request to use it?
On the electronic device policy, as long as, they can lock it in their locker or leave it unlocked, but they have the option of leaving it in the vault if they think they do a better job of not grabbing it during that time. Because we have students that leave it in their locker, and they knew they were going to get a sub, and then they're just too tempted, and they'd go and grab it during that four-minute passing period and take it whenever they had that sub. So I'm going to encourage them to bring it into the vault, but if they want to use the locker, and they have that self-discipline, stay off of it, that works too.
So at the end of the day, they come to the vault and pick them up?
Yes.
Who's manning the vault? Lindsay. I bet she gets tired of that.
She does a really good job. She can multitask.
Well, it's pretty much twice a day, in the morning, they hand it in.
How much does she have in this vault?
Well, we'll see how much we need to monitor it, because this is, we haven't had this option of keeping it in the vault, and this is only for the kids that don't have a lock for their locker. We don't provide locks for the locker, so some students bring their own lock. So if they, they don't want to have a lock on their locker, because they believe four minutes is too much time, and not enough time to be able to unlock it, in between passing periods, they have the option to leave it in the vault.
Why does a middle school student need a phone?
That's a good question.
I just thought maybe I was behind.
My fifth grader has one, I'll just say. I mean, he turns it off because I've texted him during the day, and he's like, "Dad, I can't respond during school."
So it's not off?
So it's not the kid's fault?
No. Yeah.
100%.
And generally, it's not.
No.
Well, yeah.
I was a, I was a first-year veterinary student before I had my first cellphone, so I made it.
The second year, more than.
I made it 20, I made it.
Probably a bad phone.
It's probably a bad.
I had a bad.
I was going to say, it's probably a bad.
I mean, I had one when I was like 16.
With a 16-minute timer.
And now I'd like, I'd like to give both of these damn things.
I mean, you're young, but you ain't that young.
Now look at you, double fist to this.
Okay. Further, you have anything you want to add, Mr. Torango, anything in particular?
Just to address that point a little bit further about the vault, whenever we did state testing, Lindsay did organize that, they had to turn them in that time. They couldn't even keep it in their pocket, turned off, so we already tested that out, and it worked pretty well. She had it really well organized.
How much grief would we have if we wanted to, if you wanted to put it in the vault every day, just like during testing? How much grief would that cause?
If all the students did?
Lindsay's going to kill you if you don't even file a grievance.
It'd be, yeah, I mean, probably 90% of our students have cellphones, there'd be too many.
Okay. Going back to Dr. Matusek's question about why do they need a phone for their smartphone?
Well, a lot of them leave school and go do something in the name of the country or whatever.
Well, there is, there is convenience and purpose. I mean, my own, you know, sometimes you need to notify the kid that, you know, "Hey, ride the bus today."
Yeah, I'm going to be in the office.
The office is there too for that.
Sure, no question, but.
There was a student, there was a teacher this spring that went viral, and I can't remember what school district it was in, that they just did a one-hour, and nobody could answer the phone, everybody sat them down, turned on the sounds, 400 dings, 400 notifications. And some of them, and I look back, and you've admitted to it, and you have, I've done it too. I've texted my own son, Keen Fisher, "Hey, are you going to be able to do this during lunch?" Not thinking anything about it. But now, how many of his friends did that? How many people, you know, I mean, it's just.
Well, it happened to turned off. Most of the stuff, anytime I've needed to contact my, my children, I don't want a response. And if they respond immediately, I'm going, "You're supposed to be in algebra right now." No, it's to disseminate information, so later on, after football, you can look at it and go, "Okay, this is what I know I need to do," you know, and go and, you know, at that time, which teacher is applying the no cellphone policy? It's the same thing with chewing gum. This teacher will let you chew gum, and this teacher won't, or this will as long as you share with him. Grooming and cellphone. Good.
Good for me.
So before, you were using a middle school, high school joint handbook? Is that what we had last year? Or did you?
Yes. I'm not sure how many years it was like that, but we decided to keep it that way to see how it worked, but now we're veering off. Sure, bitch, you might, so I think it's best to separate them.
Anything further?
I'll move to approve the proposed changes to the middle school handbook.
Yes, or second.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Chou.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Hell, yes.
All right, item 4.2, discussion of possible board action regarding payout at the district tuition, Chisholm Trail Technology Center for students to complete program previously started. And this goes to us.
This is, just to finish up our partnership with those students who are in the second year of a required program with Chisholm Trail Technology. On your attachment, explained that we have four students who need to go back for their second year. Of those four, three of them will be high school seniors, and one would be a graduate, so considered the adults. Of the three high schoo, well, the courses, one is in cosmetology, two in digital tech, and one in health careers. The new added district rate, as you remember, not figured by Chisholm Trail, but figured by the State Department, run through that formula, is just a little over 25,000. I visited with Mr. Thomas, they said they would split the difference with us. That would be 12,574 per individual, for a total of 37, 722. And then if we choose to.
That's for the whole year?
That is for the whole year, yes, sir. If we choose to pay for the, pay the semester at a time, that way, if for some reason, they don't follow through, they won't, they don't get to go to the second semester, which will not be the case with any of these four girls. Wrong point. If we choose to pay for the one considered an adult, she has, I think, close to 400 hours to finish her 1,500-hour program, and they estimated that cost to be approximately 1,500. I have not had a chance to visit with the board, with Coker John Trust collectively, and is with app and running to an individual member today, and obviously, send that would be applying for this, without one portion of it that go toward the technical assistance. So we'll see what they do, but I would, my recommendation to the board would be to pick up whatever the Coker John Trust can't pick up, and if that's any of it, or all of it.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Chou.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
Item number five, new business.
No new business.
Item number six, superintendent report.
So on the superintendent's report, I've attached the June 13 super report, kind of helped go through the S R 3, the tax protest, and all of it. So once everybody is loaded, please let me know. Mine is still loading as well.
Are computers are loaded, or?
When you open that attachment, is it just a circle, or did yours open immediately?
I opened mine.
June 13 board report.
Yeah, mine just opened.
Mine opens up.
One-page document?
It is a two-page document.
Can I click on superintendent? I don't have it all there.
There it is.
I'll get it.
Everybody up?
Sir.
Okay, on the S R 3, the update on that, you can see the three-year allocation that we received last summer, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Elementary's the, that's the.
Just for the audience.
And the president.
Elementary, yeah.
He doesn't know.
Elementary Secondary Schools Education Relief Act, I believe. Don't quote me on that. No, I know it as S R.
S R.
That's one of those, give me the heads up before the meeting. Hey, I might ask you this instead of.
That's Timberlake.
Instead of, yeah. Do you even remember?
I don't remember.
There's so many of those in education, there's so many.
I don't care about the acronym, I care about the money.
American Rescue Plan.
Yeah, okay, so the initial allocation for a three-year period was at 2.9 million. This year, we've encumbered, now we've not issued all the warrants, but we will, 846,000. So that gives us a balance for the following two years, to spend a little over 2.1 million. And Barb, I'll get this to you. I see you writing it all down, but I'll get this handed out to you, that way you'll have the exact numbers. So for FY '23, two thing, one thing that for sure we can put in that is the O-SIG, our school insurance quote, which is 189,000. We did that this year, frees up the general fund money. I think that's a no-brainer. We've talked about buses. I got a quote, one bus is now $123,500 and a 12-month waiting period. So with the 12-month waiting period in effect, we're kind of on the.
We're talking about a yellow bus?
Yes, sir. Yep. I think it's prudent to go ahead and order two buses, and Timberlake will revise the budget to do that, and try to get, get those, so that, you know, you're looking at about, what, $440,000 between the two of those.
Do we remember when we bought buses last?
Yellow buses recently.
I mean, we've bought buses.
Two years, probably.
These would be, these would be route buses, the two that I'm talking about here.
I was just warning, if two would be enough, since we have a year delay getting, because it's been a couple of years.
We just, we got those B-10s, they said they weren't.
If not, it may be three.
I'm not sure how many of those we got.
I mean, but.
I was just curious.
So we could do two or three. Gary right now said, you know, we're probably in the one or two range. So, and then, looking at two Suburbans possibly as well, if they qualify. And the two Suburbans right now, that's not a hard number, that's why that asterisk is there. So you're looking around 60, 55,000 to 65,000 on Suburbans right now, and they're about a three-to-four month waiting period on those. So, and then FY '24, the only thing that we know for sure at this point in time would be O-SIG. This past year, they had a 16% increase for us, as high as 30 with some other school, or no, excuse me, ours was 11%. Other schools were as high as 30%. And, you know, they go around, they reevaluate buildings and with the increase, so there's, you know, just no telling what that could go up to next year, probably 200, 205,000 minimum, so.
If the Suburbans don't qualify, could those short buses, you know, we have those like van buses that they use for like softball and stuff, I don't know how many people those fit.
They, yeah, we're in good shape on those. These are needed more for professional development.
Okay, so it's a necessity of one, okay.
Yeah, you know, smaller teams, maybe golf or something like that, but, so anyway, any questions on the S R 3? Tax protest? So I attached on your computer what I received from the assessor's office that broke it down by the entity, the protest year, and to every district in the county. For Clifton version is what I have listed here. Win protest is going to be the largest holding of this, not the sole, but it is, I didn't figure the exact percentage, but it is the largest amount. But we have four years of protests sitting out there right now, and that totals right at 3.8 million dollars that is sitting in escrow, just waiting to be settled, so.
What, how does that come, if, when it comes?
So if they.
How's it funded? By which county?
It's already funded.
It's already funded.
Oh, so we.
It's just in holdings. They're not holding their money. They, they pay the bill, but then it's in hold, it's in escrow.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
But I'm saying, we, if, when we receive it, what accounts, would it?
So of this, you can add together your general fund mileage of that 35 point, basically about 9.2, with us being in three counties, it's a little different. Your building funds is going to be about 5 mil, and I think our sinking funds are around 9.2. So when you add those together, then it's divided out by that rate of percentage. So of that, 3.8, if none of this was being protested right now, we'd have approximately an additional 2.2 million in our general fund. Right now, we're going to finish the year with a negative sinking fund balance, and your sinking fund balance, if you know what pays your bond debt obligation, it's because, and we'll be okay, because we will collect the revenue before the next note is due, but if this, if you keep getting protests, there's going to be a point in time that you possibly technically could not pay your bill. And that has happened to some schools before, and they've allowed them, the state has allowed them to, you know, borrow from the general fund, so to speak, and what have you. But we will probably be getting written up by the State Department for having a negative fund balance. Beyond our control, anybody in this room or anybody in the district, it is what it is.
So these companies that have filed a protest, Wind Farm and a couple of pipeline companies.
Those are predominantly the.
Right. They have paid taxes, but they have protested the excessive amount.
So.
So we've received some of the money.
No, no.
Not at all. Everything is in suspense?
Yes.
I thought we had received, that they had said, "Well, yeah, we owe this, we'll pay this, and the rest is in suspense."
Now, now, that may be, whatever amount they're protesting, because it may be two or three different wind farms, for example. I don't, I don't know exactly what part they are protesting. And BCP, for example, I don't know what exactly portion they're protesting. So whatever amount they are, that's paid, but it's held there.
The protested amount is held in escrow.
And so, say they sell.
They agreed to a lower amount, and that's released to us.
And that's been released to, that's protested.
Once it, once it's settled upon, so say they agree to 70% of agreement on their, against them, so 70% of that money would come to us, 30% would go back to them. And there used to be a penalty on individuals and corporations who protested. There's no penalty now, so there's, you know, no deterrent to do that. So it becomes a lot of people, a lot of businesses, business laws.
We're part of a lawsuit, too.
We are part of a lawsuit.
On the wind farms.
On the wind farms, which the last I heard on that is, it did not go in our favor, so now it's being appealed to the Supreme Court, the Oklahoma Supreme Court.
We're still in better shape than they are in Texas, because the property taxes in Texas, which are so much higher already than here in Oklahoma, everything has been appraised 60, 80, to 200, to 300% more than was just previous years, and every homeowner, every business owner in the state of Texas, just about has, has or should file.
I think I got a letter from the county saying the dollars will go up.
And, and they all go up a little bit. We have safeguards in effect, it can't go up a certain, greater than whatever the number is, 18% or 13%, I think. That's one of the things, I know the schools have, have tried to get that changed over the years, that, you know, properties can be assessed at a greater value, so we could receive more money.
So just wanted to update you on the tax protest.
On that tax protest, on the wind farm, don't they have a five-year deferral from the state? Does anyone know that?
They have most applied for that five-year exemption, and as they come off the exemption, as that expires, then that's when they will start protesting, for the most part. They don't mind paying the full amount, quote paying the full amount, when somebody else is paying their bill.
They'll really.
But then when they start, that's when they'll start to protest.
So if we're coming up on the fifth year.
I didn't know how long these have been active. Was it six years?
We're coming up on the fifth year.
Fifth year, okay.
And they will really protest, you know, when they start losing their tax benefit.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just a part of the law.
Update on Office of School Safety and Security. This is kind of a follow-up from Dr. Matusek's request at the last board meeting. We obviously all, you know, prayers are out with the Uvalde, Texas, and everything that went. Right after your request, Dr. Matusek, I'd sent you guys an email letting you know that they had contacted the State Department Office of School and Security. They're going to be here on this Wednesday, and they're also going to, joining them is Index, who actually provides a lot of the, you know, access entry points and what have you. They're going to do a walkthrough, and maybe basically do that assessment of what requested, so, you know, we're kind of ahead of the game on that. So once, now, the State Department, obviously Index will look at the doors, windows, you know, things like that. The State Department, you know, they'll look at perimeters as well, but they also will The State Department, you know, they'll look at perimeters as well, um, but they also will come back and look at traffic flow and, you know, what our check-in procedures are. They, they want to do it another time with students in school. So it kind of get the best of both worlds, but we get a recommendation. I've had some feedback from some teachers on some requests, which I'll just pass on to them. Um, and so, um, I, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape, unfortunately, and nobody really likes to hear this, but, you know, schools, churches, hospitals, malls, I mean, they're just soft targets. And I feel like we're doing the best we can, and it's like, I remind people, I show up here every day, I feel, I feel safe, and, um, I want to make sure that our kids are safer than what I feel, so.
In the news today, there were two instances of, you know, trying to get into a school and trying to get into a song.
A resource officer took care of one of them.
Yep. Yep.
Um, any, any questions or comments on the school safety and security? Just wanted to update you on that, let everybody, really let everybody in town know what we were doing as well, so.
Thank you.
Um, grounds and maintenance, you know, current projects, um, softball concession, uh, the rains, earlier rains, putting back a little bit. Uh, he still feels like he'll be able to get that done. Um, close, maybe soon after softball season's starting. Um, at that time is when he'll do the canopy, uh, the track press box, I've visited with Mr. Ladwick, um, there, they should have that up. I mean, it's built, they're just waiting on coming to install it, he knows we're not going to hurry until this spring, so. Uh, but he knows we need to get it in there for electrical purposes, uh, PA system, you know, things like that. Uh, baseball canopy, canopy, excuse me, Mr. Hugaboom, planning on doing that, I think at the same time he's doing the softball canopies and press box dugout. So come to the track, you know, as we plan, I've visited with Ms. Baxter, Mr. Fletcher today. Um, next year, looking at hosting elementary and middle school track meets. They would really like to wait a year on the high school, just because they'd like to use the elementary and middle school as a trial run. Plus also through the spring, allow them to visit with coaches to see what date may be best. They don't want to conflict with somebody else, you know, everybody's going east that weekend or whatever it may be. Um, but the design of, you know, the main entry, we have the gates kind of in the northwest, assuming it doesn't rain, we would just use the grass parking lot, make all the buses park in the southeast corner, where we put the gravel down right by the FFA barn. A way that teams could use their tent south of the track, and the main entry for everybody would be in the northwest corner. The thing that's nice, and just remind everybody, you know, besides the, um, discus, all events can take place in the infield. And so whoever we hire to keep, to be that gatekeeper of letting people in, you know, and just being contained to the contestants, because with the stands there, everybody can see every event that's going on, except for the discus, which they could walk to the football practice field. So everybody should be outside, and you guys know how hectic that is at track meets, when, when there's not. So have to find a good gatekeeper. Um, parking, if we, if, you know, if it has rain, we can't use that south, then basically we're going to use everything to the west. And it's not ideal, but you're going to walk through the transportation portion, but, I mean, that's what it is right now. Um, concession, um, not, you know, we're not planning on building a concession, we could look at either opening up the football concession, making people walk, or setting up a tent, or talking to a local vendor that we've done before, uh, possibly renting a trailer. So, you know, just kind of see, uh, see what people involved, with parents and volunteers that want to do that, what they think would be best to make the most money for the track program. So kind of leaving that up to Cheyenne, or excuse me, Ms. Baxter and Mr. Fletcher. Uh, restroom's got the same thing, I think we bring in some portables like they do at some smaller track meets, but we also have the football, that if somebody just feels better going, walking down there and going to the restrooms down there, they can use those. Um, timing system, our timing system, when they need to get a partial new, there's two brands, and ours don't interface with each other, and it's used for the cross-country. Um, there's a smaller meet, so it hasn't been too big of an issue, but the portion they need to replace is ten to twelve years old, uh, Coach Baxter told me. So, you know, we need to look at getting a timing system, um, a PA system, which they're getting a quote for that. And then there's some miscellaneous equipment. Um, the, the high pad, high jump pads and pole vault pads have been in storage. Uh, some of those I've seen where mice rats have got to them and, you know, bedded in the winter, so they're going to need to be replaced. But I don't know, I, I just left it up to them to go through and see how much and what, uh, and find out, and get a price on that. So be some other expenses before we get there, but, um, we're kind of headed that direction on being able to get the track done, have it ready for the spring for events. Um, talk a little bit then on number six, about the tire lot to be cleaned up, cleared. Um, just reminder, October seventh is the last day scheduled for them to be in there. Um, that current metal building, I think I was able to tell some of you. Um, I think that's, that's measured at a thirty by sixty, so approximately eighteen hundred square feet. I've been approached by a couple individuals who would like to buy that. So as it gets closer, the recommendation would come to you guys as a later date is to declare a surplus, and then we'll open it up for sealed bids and take bids that way, and then set a date to be taken in consideration in the bid process of how long it'll take them to get it removed. Um, and then I made sure to asterisk there for Dr. Matusic, as much of the dirt that we need to use to level that off, we'll help bring that from that south and try to get that all out by the track season. As it moves, as it works to the west, there's a lot more rebar and concrete in it. And so, um, I think, you know, he's got, the county knows they can take it anytime, if there's any places for that stuff, kind of redraft or, you know, water control.
Where did that come from?
Uh, swimming pool, before the dome, yeah.
I was wondering about that.
I think there's some more piles, there's more piles over by the, or here too, isn't it? Or right over here at the parking lot, behind the house.
Uh, chat.
Yeah.
There are two piles of chat, I know, small piles. Um, the only thing that I've met, heard, or received any feedback on, what are we going to do at that corner, whether to do something, is, you know, maybe like a marquee when you go into the football, baseball field, something like that, but just, uh, you know, maybe an LED marquee at an outdoor school event. But we got plenty of time, uh, but that gives us something to kind of start thinking about on project of, of that.
Refresh me, um, the youth, uh, baseball softball fields, we, do we, as a school, own that land?
We do own that land, yes.
And just allow them to use it?
That was the agreement.
They, they maintain the fields, but what about the parking areas and all that? They've been hosting a lot of softball tournaments and whatnot the last few, uh, weeks, which is great, but who's responsible for the maintenance, you know, when ruts are created and things like that?
Us.
Mm-hmm.
Us, yeah. We found an article where that agreement with the board and the city, um, the city board, when they met, and that was the basic agreement. His city gets to use it, and we get to maintain it. Um, high school, um, that west storage room, if you just come out of southeast corner of the gym, right off of my office, you've got the extension off the art room, and then the room to the north, which I think at one time was a shop room, is that correct? I believe so. So that had become a jump room, piled high, so a couple roll-offs, and that is cleared out. Uh, we've replaced the lighting in there with new LED lighting, and in the art room, uh, going to paint the walls, have that ordered. And then the ideas then for repurposing that room, um, also, whatever we put in there, you have to look at an HVA system. Uh, got a quote from the local, and that was right at twelve thousand dollars.
How big a room is that, Val?
Oh, I meant to put that in here, Mr. Val. I think it's right at three thousand square feet.
Pretty good size.
It's pretty good size, yes, it is. Um, not from the request of the girls program, but, you know, we've had issues with the basement flooding through the years, and, you know, they'll put mats down, and then when it floods, you got to take all the mats out, you got to do everything else, and so, um, that, if, if nobody has objection, that could be a possibility of moving that up. Uh, I do not remember, I think it was Mr. Beaman told me at one time, I don't know if it's Dr. Woods, did you guys have discussion of building an elevated floor in that basement?
Not that I recall.
Okay.
Not that I recall.
Okay, Mr. Beaman thought that, but I didn't know how long ago that was, and I don't know if that was-
It was never brought to the board.
Okay.
It didn't before.
Okay. It's, was told that it was, you know, because the water only gets so high to build an elevated floor, and then that, you know, metal framing on that portion, but then that way, if it floods, whatever you had above it, if you just want to make it a storage room, or, you know, whatever it might be, wouldn't be that way. But I, I don't know that by you, see if that had been anything anybody here was aware of, or even interested in, or just abandoned it. So, just keep that-
Well, we'll, we'll-
Can nothing be done to drain that, to, to help with that?
Well, the-
Are there, are there?
Well, the problem is, is when, usually when it's raining and there is an overflow, we've lost power, and that, it's the power issue. So if we want to spend on a generac and, and hook up to it, that might be a possibility.
So we've got pumps down in there.
We do have pumps down in there, and they work fine, and, and they're-
Where are those pumps pumping? Are they pumping off the floor level, or are they below the floor?
They're dug down below the floor level.
Below the floor level.
Yep, but.
If it's only, if it, if it's only a problem when we lose electricity, I'd be-
Look at the possibility.
To look at a-
And I'll, I'll see if that has been discussed, if Jerry, uh, excuse me, Gary has checked into that. I have-
Do we have the generator at the dome?
I don't think you do.
No.
I think we have.
We have the capability, I think, to bring that one in.
There's an interface, there's an interface board.
If you're talking about generators, you might look at, because if that's a storm facility and it's closed.
Well, the generator for that's just got to run two or three hundred and twenty volt pumps, right?
Yeah. Lot different.
Yeah.
My residential program out there for a generator for a storm shelter.
Check into that. Um, number eight, getting quotes on the FFA roofs, the shop and the classroom portion, both. Uh, just able to get a quote so far on one, from one company, so waiting on a couple others. And then, you know-
Do we have some problems?
Yes, yes, Mr. Woods brought that to our attention, showed Gary where they are, showed me, and yes.
Is it all metal?
They need, yes, it is. Yes.
I got it.
So that brings me to number nine, you know, from the day that we have accepted ownership of the dome, there's been issues between the extensions, the training room and the office area, the office entry area. And Dr. Woods worked, went back and forth with Wind Construction, I've been in contact with him. Um, the contractor's been out numerous times to explain things and to show, uh, called him out again, and there was one thing on his end that he fixed the other day, but throughout all of this, basically we have filed a warranty with the manufacturer, and so now they will be the ones to take the next step, to come out and say, our product is good, or it is not. So that, that's the next step.
I wonder what they'll decide.
So, um, that's everything we got going on right now. Um, Mr. Griffin, I left off, just because I didn't have, I just forgot to put it on there, checking into the fence of that extension on that west side to where you could secure, uh, baseball, softball entry, but since we have till this spring, uh, just kind of slipped my mind, to be honest, but still something I'm working on. Anything else of smaller projects that you've seen, or anything you think we need to consider?
Well, we talked about the entrance to the visitor's side of the football field. I would also, and been saying this for several years, something that needs to be done, uh, improving the entry and the parking area at the fieldhouse.
On the west side, or south side?
South side of the fieldhouse. That, we, we've, year after year after year, have had, had that recreated and whatnot. I think it needs to be, uh, concrete at the entry, similar, if we leave the parking area, which I'd love to be able to see it in concrete or asphalt, but, uh, you know, just like the entrance to this parking lot here to the west, it's a concrete entrance, so it never washes out over a-
I notice that where it drops off.
Yeah, and it's, you know, and we have-
Both financial, yes.
Students and, uh, and faculty, they're driving in there and out of there every single day, uh, throughout the year, and it just continually gets washed out. I think that that entire area, it, it would behoove us to, to pave the entire thing. Um, you know, we could even consider, uh, paving all the way to behind the visitor's stands, you know, because all we do there is, uh, collect brush for a, uh, once a year bonfire that, uh, you know, is a-
If you were going to look at a general ugly site, could you use E S S, E SR funds?
I'm not sure, those aren't the initial list, but you can, you can always write and request it and take your budget if that proves it.
Yes.
I would think so.
And because that'd be a big deal.
And the amount of weeds and grass that grow up, and, and same way with, uh, along the, the Mitchell Road, between Mitchell Road and the fence to the football field, you know, it's, it's gravel, and, yeah, it got sprayed, but all the weeds that grew up to three foot high, that got sprayed are now dead, but they're still three feet high.
It's grown up instead of green.
Yeah, exactly, uh, but i- if that was, you know-
I'll get some quotes on that.
Done, you know, paved in, in some manner, then we wouldn't have to worry about mowing parking lots.
I'll get some quotes before I bring that to you guys. Anything else?
Everything good in the school, classrooms?
Yes, we got all the classrooms that requested carpet, got them all taken care of, they look really good, the o- office areas, elementary vocal and the speech, or, excuse me, the physical therapy rooms, speech and physical therapy rooms, look really good, so.
Uh, one of the things was the, uh, the drainage ditch, you know, we talked about partnering up with the town. Have we heard anything from the town that they might be able to participate with?
Yeah, just at, at the time, just, they've just got some other projects, it's just not priority for him at this point in time. Yeah, they, they'd love to do it, but like all of us, you know, it's just, they want to help us, but they've just got some other things that definitely take a knee over that.
So anything that we want to do at this point is pretty much on us?
Yes. Um, and that's why I had possible projects before, if you remember, um, I brought you five things back in January, just talked about, the things that have been brought up, being by you, just people, the things that, um, possible to look at, and just kind of, after visiting the other day, uh, with financial advisors, we're talking about, you know, the bond payoff of where it was initially at twenty-seven. Now you're looking at a situation where, um, you know, we may be looking at potential bond issue in twenty-four, as early as twenty-four, even twenty-five. Obviously, the discussion needs to keep alive, and those are ideas coming forward. So, you know, the possible projects, the five that I talked to you guys about in January, you can mark off the two, the number one and number four, uh, by taking over the middle school gym and making that to a wrestling room, uh, redoing the schedule, thanks to Mr. Traingo and Mr. Faulkner. Uh, that took care of that aspect, and then the track building, you know, no sense in doing anything and considering anything there unless we want to do number two first, and that's add-on to the current transportation building, and remodel that in some sort, and get all the vehicles, all, everything over there. And then, so that would be, until you do that, you really, no, no sense discussing one anymore. But I didn't know how many, at the time, when I threw all these out there, you know, it was really just to soak it in, it wasn't really to see the pulse of water. Because like Mr. Matusic said, I think that night, that not everything, nothing on here is, is required by any means, you know.
Want.
It, it, yeah, it's wants and could be considered needs, depending on what department you're talking to, but in the overall eyes.
Now, one of the needs that is actually a want, but it, it, now, under number six, where you said, where you have LED conversions, is that for the auditorium, or is that for-
Just district lighting, it's light powered to speed and what-
I know we got quotes for the auditorium, uh, the general lighting, the house lighting as well as stage lighting.
Yes.
Correct, or maybe else?
Yes.
Did you, uh, explore any other companies that do that?
I didn't.
Jack, I know you, and I didn't remember if we discussed this in here, or if it was individually that we had, you know, when the bids came in.
I turned that over to Mr. Faulkner and, and Jack, to be honest, on that, so.
Do you know of anybody that could tell us what electrical usage might drop to with LED lights throughout the entire school?
They can, they can come out and do an audit, and before they, you know, before you send it out to bid, and they will do a proposed estimate for you, yes.
I was always amazed how much these fluorescents bore.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe, it'd be nice to see, I mean, if that's-
What, what spurred this is as, uh, local electrician has replaced things, obviously, you know, you, but it's room by room. Well, I put the, we put the LED lights in here in the new current storage room, not knowing what we're going to do with it, and teacher walks through, sees them, like, I, I want to be in these lights, I want, I want them in my room. Well, you know, that's going to lead to, if one wants it, they're all going to want it, and if it's needed, and so it's like, do we need to request an energy audit and tell us, this is what it, you, you know, we're going to save over ten years and whatnot?
Well, that'd be nice to see, to, to be able to justify it.
You bet.
Well, and something like the auditorium, the ju, the house lighting is out.
And, and that, I will say-
New bulbs need to be put in, or the system needs to be checked.
And that is completely different conversion than the LED classroom lighting. Okay, for the, for the stage, for the auditorium type lighting, that is a specialty lighting, that would not be what we're talking about. So, uh, the, the prices on that, I apologize that I don't share that with the board, but I've seen those.
Yeah, and, and I've been made aware, it's quite pricey.
It, yeah, I mean, like, like, be sitting down when you see it.
But we're two years away from not having house lights turn on when those, you know, the, how many bulbs are out right now?
Yeah, three in one bank are out.
Yeah.
You know, so, but some of those, we had extras to replace and found them. And they just weren't replaced at the time that we used them, so. Um, so that's the reason I put the LED conversion, hadn't been asked that yet, um, but I know that possibility is coming. And then, as Christopher mentioned one time, turfing athletic field, and so. And, but we're talking big projects, when I think of big, you know, possible future projects. As we get, as we visit, anything come to mind of putting on this list just to keep out in front?
You know, you, turfing an athletic field, a football field, you know, is a big ticket item, but there's other things that, I mean, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I went with the football team to Pawhuska, okay? Pawhuska's not bigger than us, and they have a turf field, and, uh, you know, not discounting the, uh, the, the football games that go on during the season, they hosted, uh, six or eight- they hosted six or eight football teams that are paying dollars to come and they're able to use their football field being a turf field in the middle of the summer without having to worry about painting it and mowing it and watering it.
It also gets used for band field.
For band field, there's the drum corps competitions. There's more than just a 10-game high school football season that a surface like that can be used for. And I know a feasibility study would have to be warranted, what could be used on it. As opposed, you know, how much does it cost to maintain a football field within Bermuda grass that goes dormant before the fourth game of the football season?
I'd like to see what they, I think we did this once, but an injury, oh yeah, comparison. I think we did that.
Yeah, had to do it to hardness of the soil versus.
I just think that as we consider our list here of possible things to do, we need to keep an eye on education and our educational facilities. Because it gives the appearance of, you know, all we want is more money for a new sports complex or something. And I just, I'd like to.
Well, I just, once again, repeat, any PO that any principal's ever turned in, we've not said no on any, we're not done without anything in the classroom.
Right, right, right.
You know, if our numbers were growing, this list would look a little different. Luckily, we're in a fortunate situation where we have the classrooms necessary to house our kids.
I'm just saying, our big-ticket items, you know, we start talking about, you know.
How's our lunchroom situation?
Well, through scheduling, they hope to ease that a little bit. High school will still be packed. That is, that's not a good situation, the cafeteria needs to be bigger.
Something to look at is what, I mean, if we, if we want to do something for all students that benefit all students, you know, Mr. Lau's speaking though, for an upcoming bond issue, that can be justified by taxpayers.
At one time, just in casual conversation, we talked about making the middle school gym possibly, but sharing, well, you know, definitely don't want to share a gym with your cafeteria, you know, that air. But, you know, you could look at building an area in a parking lot. Probably wouldn't be able to be attached because of the exit doors from the gym, but that'd be something architects tell you not to do.
There's a, there's a basement right below it that you just asked, what could we do with it?
Well, it's smaller than the cafeteria.
Well, I'm not saying, but it could alleviate, you know, that's for juniors and seniors to eat or something of that nature, you know.
Does it, forgive me for not knowing, but does all the cooking take place in two buildings? Would, and I don't know, since this is what I'm asking, does it make sense to have a centralized kitchen?
No, it's all done in the high school.
The cooking?
It's not done in the grade school at all.
You can tell he doesn't do any cooking.
I'll say, yeah.
So my, I mean, then, my, I was already asking, because like if you thought, if we're thinking we need a little more room in the kitchen, like.
We need more room in this.
I'm not an architect, but if that kitchen wasn't a kitchen and it was a big open room and we had a kitchen someplace else that was just a building that was a kitchen. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep. I'll be an architect about that.
Because, yeah, I don't know.
Put the kitchen on the west side then.
Somewhere, and it could be like a centralized kitchen. It could be across the road someplace, like, it doesn't really matter if it's a centralized kitchen and is distributed from wherever. Just a thought.
Anything further?
That'll do it.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, what does S R stand for?
You've had time to look.
I'll bet he knows next time.
Item number seven, personnel. We're going to 7.1, proposed executive session to discuss the following concerning employees, which is in accordance with 25 Oklahoma Statute, Section 307B1, support salary schedule, certified salary schedule, extra duty salary schedule, and a high school math teacher position. So.
Who did it?
Second.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
All right, so we'll come back into open session here, 9:05. We entered executive session at 7:58. We discussed the following concerning employees, which is the support salary schedule, certified salary schedule, extra duty salary schedule, high school math teacher position. All members were present, along with Mr. Sternberger. We only discussed agenda items and no votes were taken.
What time did you?
7:58.
7:58, 9:05. So, let's see, where are we going to pick up? We're going to go to 7.
12.
12, thank you. And of course, all the notes are backed up on the other. Let me get here real quick. So. The support salary schedule was one of the, I don't know how to do this, they're all listed here. Support salary schedule, there we go. Discussion, possible board action regarding support salary schedule. Your recommendation?
I'd recommend the board salary schedule as presented.
As presented.
Which means what?
So, I mean, I can't list the whole thing, I just wrote it down. I'll get you, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll get you all the details, because we talked about a lot of different, a lot of different options.
It's not a blanket.
No, 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 absolutely, I'll get, I'll email this to you all, yes. Everything was voted on, we'll have it.
We'll clean it up and get it off to you, Barb, and to Jack as well. Your recommendation is this?
Salary schedule as presented, yes.
As presented? Any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the support salary schedule as presented by Mr. Sternberger.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Cho?
I thought that was another motion.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Item 7.3, discussion, possible board action regarding certified salary schedule. And your recommendation is?
As presented.
As presented. I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the salary schedule as presented by Mr. Sternberger in our packet here, second.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Item 7.4, I think if I'm on track here. Discussion, possible board action regarding extra duty salary schedule.
As presented and handed out, it will be made public.
Any discussion from you guys? I'll make a motion that we approve the extra duty salary schedule as presented by Mr. Sternberger.
Second.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
7.5, discussion, possible board action regarding the appointment of Todd Cameron, Timberly Yuck, Matt Means.
They were just inadvertently left off last time, so Todd noticed that they were left off. He didn't have a job. Wouldn't just really like to be employed next year, so.
You mean Timberly didn't catch up? Timberly was worried about.
Any discussion?
Please no discussion.
Now it's time to get her.
Would that be your recommendation?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Wholeheartedly, I'm sure.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Item 7.6, discussion, possible board action regarding appointment of the following certified positions on temporary contracts for the 2022 school year. A high school math teacher, and I believe you have a recommendation for us?
I have a recommendation for Matthew Thomas.
Matthew Thomas. I would move that we approve the certified position for the 2022 school year of our high school math teacher, and his name again?
Matthew Thomas.
Matthew Thomas, thank you, sorry.
On a temporary contract?
On a temporary contract, yes.
Second.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Item 7.7, discussion, possible board action regarding extra duty assignments for the Together Conexito English Learners Grant Summer Program at $30 an hour. That would include Elizabeth Marin, Jill Murray for the 20.
Is that wrong? Should it be 22?
223.
No, it's more this summer.
It goes through June 30th.
Oh, okay.
Summer school this June.
The remainder of the 21, 22 school years. And I will, is that your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
I will move that we approve the extra duty assignments for Together Conexito for $30.
Thank you.
Mr. Lau?
Elizabeth Marin and Jill Murray for the 21, 22 school. Aye.
Got to get this.
Mr. Cho? Mr. Griffin? Mr. Tillman?